And we thank you that you love us so much that you gave your only son. And Lord, that you have given to us life that we can enjoy. You placed us in a city that we can progress, we can do great things. And we thank you for your help that you give to us. I pray, Lord, that your hand will be upon all of our leaders. And dear God, that you will be upon all of us people, that we will work together. And Lord, that we will make Shawnee the best place to live. I thank you, Father, for the privilege that we have. And I just pray tonight, God, that your hand would be wrapped around this community. And Lord, that we look unto you. And dear God, that we continue to strive, dear Lord, to make this to be the best place in Oklahoma, our own land. I pray for our commissioners, our mayor, our city manager. And dear Lord, that your hand would be upon them, all of our leadership. And I pray tonight, God, that you will bless us, that we will all prosper and make this the place where many people would want to come and set up their businesses and be a part of us. I thank you now that we can come to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Attention, physician salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is consider approval of the agenda.
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Hall. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shaw. Motion carries. Item number two is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So I'm moved.
Motion by Vice Mayor. Second by Commissioner Vogel. Motion carries. Item number three is commissioners' comments. Any comments? We have, I have one. We have our planning retreat coming up, and I need to kind of field you out a little bit here, talk to you commissioners. We have a new city manager. And there was some discussion about putting it off, but we've got several issues, I think, that we need to discuss. And I wonder if Friday afternoon, you want to do it all day Friday? And if we had to come back on Saturday, would you rather like Friday afternoon and then Saturday? Give me some guidance on that, so we can get the room booked. And I think that's the 23rd and 20, is that 23rd and 24?
Yes, sir.
Did we finalize on those dates? Yeah, it's done.
Well, I think we need to do it. I'm available anytime.
I think we do, and I'm not, I'm available, but I think Friday.
All day Friday.
All day Friday.
All day Friday? Does that work? Can you check your schedule?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, all day Friday. How about you, Commissioner Shaw?
Well, I have one meeting, but I think I can reschedule that.
Okay. Is there anybody, James?
I think I've already got it set up for them.
Okay, well, then we'll let Kerry know to, we've got the room, we've already had the room booked, but then we'll kind of, we've got a lot of things to discuss and work through, and we need to start prioritizing some of our projects, you know, because there'll be budget planning coming up for next year, and we've got to decide what we won't put in that budget, because they'll be planning the budget starting in a sixty days.
If we have agenda items, we can just send it for suggestions.
Anything you want to discuss, please send it to me, and I'll get it to Justin, and we'll do anything, okay, during this time, and so that we can work through that, okay? Any other commissioner comments?
Oh, yeah. I don't know, I assume this is probably going to be Brian's last meeting. I see he's enjoying being in the audience tonight, and him. But again, as one of the commissioners that was on the commission when he came here, I appreciate all your work and everything you've done. And I think Shawnee has really moved forward, and we've done some good things on your leadership. Thank you.
Well, I think we'd all kind of say the same thing, and Brian, we're thrilled for you, and you're getting a new opportunity, and so the best to you. At this time is citizens' participation, and we do encourage citizens, if you have something you want to say to us, come up. Please feel free to do so. Now, if it's in relation to an item on the agenda, feel whatever you want to do. Come up and talk to us, okay? I see you're ready. Come forward. Please state your name and talk into the microphone for the TV audience and sign in, please, sir.
Is this a pen?
No, we don't even have a pen up there, do we?
Oh, okay.
I don't know.
Oh, here it is.
High-tech pen, huh?
Well, I just came up really to say how much I've appreciated Brother McDougall's association with the city here. And I know that we have had a lot of progress made under his leadership, and I just hope that he will have a good turnout and that everything will go well for him and his new position. I want to commend you for having Justin set in as interim. I've had some associations with Justin, and he's always worked well with them, and I think he'll make a good man in this position. And I think that he needs the participation of all of us behind him so that he can do the job that he's cut out to do.
Those are great words. Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward and say something? Okay, you sure? Nobody else wants to say something? Okay, then we'll move on to the presentation of a citation of appreciation for Mr. McDougall. Mr. McDougall, could you come out, please, sir?
The first one says, "The City of Shawnee, Oklahoma certificate of appreciation for leadership and service in the Shawnee community. And is presented to Brian McDougall. We extend to you our personal thanks and the sincere appreciation for your contribution of leadership and community service. You have demonstrated a spirit of selflessness and caring that we all aspire to achieve. Your leadership within the City of Shawnee and various organizations throughout the Shawnee community has made a lasting impact. You have served this community well since 2009 in numerous ways. We are deeply appreciative of your many contributions to the community throughout the years. Therefore, on this fifth day of January 2015, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, and on behalf of all the citizens within our community, I do hereby tender this certificate of appreciation to Brian McDougall, extending our best wishes to him and his entire family for much success and happiness."
I also have a plaque here that says, "Brian McDougall, City Manager, City of Shawnee, February 2nd, 2009, to January 9th, for your outstanding service, untiring dedication and unyielding commitment to the citizens of Shawnee." The microphone is yours, sir.
Well, considering, I didn't even know this was on the agenda tonight, I'm very honored. Thank you very much. It's been an honor to be your manager for the last six years. When you take this job, you don't realize a lot of times how much people actually do care for you and your family when you come to the community. And you guys did that, and we've accomplished a lot. I'm proud of your service and our staff's service. Thank you very much.
Item number six is discussion, consideration, and possible action on Timothy Thomas' appeal of an administrative order requiring the demolition of the residential structure located at 645 North Broadway. Mr. Erickson?
Thank you, Mr. Members. This appeal was originally set for your December 15th meeting, and if you recall, at that time, we were not certain that the owner of the property had been given fair and proper notice, and so we did issue additional notification, which was signed for by Mr. Thomas on December 26th, 2014. The subject property is at 645 North Broadway. And on November 13th, 2014, the city issued an administrative order requiring that the structure, which is a duplex structure, basically a single-family residence on the outside that's been converted years ago to two units. And that order was issued again November 13th to dismantle and remove that structure because it met the definition of dilapidated, according to our belief. Mr. Thomas was not present at that hearing on the 13th, and he then appealed that decision on November 21st. And now it's before you on appeal. In your packets, which begins on your digital packet, I think on page 21, is some detailed information, including a summary of the property, and then a series of photographs dated December 9th, 2014, so you can see the condition of the property and some of the issues that were identified by staff in making that determination in the order. The property was actually originally brought to a public hearing back in August 14th. At that time, Mr. Thomas was present at the hearing. He indicated that he planned to possibly remodel the building or perhaps sell it. And the hearing was recessed until November 13th to provide him some time to obtain a remodel permit and begin repairs, or sell the property and have the buyer begin that process. A remodel permit was never subsequently applied for, and so the property is in its, is in similar condition today that it was back in August, if not further deteriorated. And so, that being said, staff does find and does strongly feel that the property does meet the definition of dilapidated, and does recommend that it be razed and removed. As I indicated in the report, if a new owner is found for the property, if someone wants to spend the resources to improve it, we always give them that opportunity. And I would not have an objection to that if there was a plan in place to make that happen quickly, or moderately quickly, but there does not appear to be one at this time. And so, absent a good faith effort by the owner or a buyer that intends to make improvements to that property, I do recommend that you deny the appeal. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions of Mr. Erickson? Okay, not hearing yet.
Justin, so kind of how long has this been going on?
The property was originally brought to a dilapidated hearing in August of 2014. To give you just a little bit more history, it's about 2,400 square feet. It was built in 1930. And one of the units has been unoccupied, I think for approximately, I have that information here on page one, there was, one of the two units has been without water service, I think for approximately two years. One was more recent over mid-2014. According to Potawatomi County Records, property taxes were not paid in 2013 either, the last time we had checked. It was originally purchased in 2005 for $18,500.
That answer your questions?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
Has there been any other communication from Mr. Thomas?
Not to my knowledge, ma'am, no.
Okay, no further discussion. The chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
I think Mr. Thomas may be present and may wish to speak to you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Thomas, are you here?
Yes.
Okay, sir, come forward, sir. If you'd like to speak to us, if not.
I guess I had a misunderstanding at, I went to his hearing, and they wrote on a piece of paper what date to be back. They did give me time to get permits, which I had sold, made a contract out to Link Cowan. He owns a liquor store right down the street from it, or sort of next door. But Claude Hindon and his wife had passed away, and it went on to his son, his wife, and his new wife, and then she passed away, and then it went on to his son, and he passed away. And now, the person that has control of the title is in Florida, and I'm waiting to hear back from him what he has to do. They wanted to charge Link Cowan 2,600 more dollars or something to bring that, to release the title by death for Claude Hindon. Do you understand what I'm saying? Anyways, I believe he could do that, but I'm still, I need more time is what I needed to begin with. And I didn't mean to miss the meeting that I was supposed to have with them. I just, I thought they were going to send me something in the mail. That was the misunderstanding on that. And the place has been the same for 10 years. It hasn't changed in 10 years, and everybody knows that. It had, you know, it's been there since 1930. It hadn't burned down or fell down yet. So, I don't believe it's in that bad a shape, but it does need work. And, you know, the place that this was is, it was rented real low for people who could hardly afford anything. They got a check for their social security check. They couldn't afford, they couldn't even afford utilities, half of them, you know. But I charged them $200 for renting and tried to help them. I lost a lot of money paying for their utilities myself, which, you know, I didn't like doing, but I did it. But, you know, I just, I just need a little bit more time to get my things together.
Do you want to have any questions?
Got your permits, are you talking about?
Well, they, he said, he wants the remodeling permit.
Okay.
You know, and if Link was going to buy it, then he would get it. But, you know, I can do it, but I just need more time.
Okay, so if you were given more time, what would you do?
Well, he, the way it was stated to me, that to bring it back up to par, I don't want to rent the downstairs out. The downstairs is the best, you know. I was going to use it for storage or whatever, stuff like that. The upstairs is actually in pretty good shape. But, you know, like I said, I didn't get a permit and take him through the building and let him look at it. I guess the inspector, Jared, I believe, right?
And that's been since July, when the building inspector did that?
No, it hasn't. It's been since November, that I know of all this. No, November is when I had to come back. I guess it, maybe it was July, I'm not sure. But there was, there was a person that didn't have much money and couldn't afford anything, and wasn't really staying there, but, you know. She couldn't, she couldn't afford utilities on it to begin with, so that's where the city, I guess, got involved in it.
So you're looking at getting permits, and you're looking at doing a revitalization of the first floor?
I don't know. I guess it's, it would be up to them what they would want.
Who's them? Yeah, I'm confused. Do you own the property?
Well, I bought it, you know, and I bought it in the same shape it's in.
So you have clear title?
No, I don't.
It has a cloud on the title.
So you have four others on this title with you? Is that what I was seeing? How many's on the title with you, Mr. Thomas?
Just me.
Just you?
That, that, well, I, nobody's, I guess the title's still in Claude Hindon's name, I believe. And then he put everything in trust, and then he passed away. And his wife, at the time, got it in her, they're trusting her name, and she's gone. And then her son, John, he passed away, and the only person left was someone in Florida by Hindon.
Okay, so what changes have you made since you purchased this property? If you could educate me.
Well, the downstairs, they're really, it's ugly, you know, but it could, it could use some work.
So have you committed funds to this as to date?
I mean, I'm a, I work in construction every day. I'm building a school in Dibble right now. I just, it's a long way to get, all the way to Dibble early in the morning, back here before the sun's gone, so it's been kind of hard. But we're back in Norman this afternoon, so, you know, I shouldn't be that far out of reach.
I have a question about the structural integrity of the building. This is a two-story, and it looks like some of the foundation there is in pretty bad shape, so we're not talking about just cosmetic changes to this. We're talking about what looks like to me some serious structural problems. Justin, are there any determined safety issues with this property?
I think, as you indicated, there are, there are some structural concerns that we have with it, and that we would require it be repaired through a remodel permit process. We haven't enumerated each of those particular concerns, but I think, as you indicated from the photographs, you can tell that there are kind of basic maintenance problems that are readily apparent, but then there's also some more significant structural issues also apparent.
Yeah, but that's been like that for, I've been to Shawnee.
What would have to be done to this property in order for it to be habitable? Habitable, how do you pronounce that?
In my opinion, major repairs, based on what we've seen with other properties in similar condition. My estimation, it would, most individuals in this circumstance would probably remove the structure, because the cost to repair it would exceed the value of it.
And are we talking about how much money? I mean, just to make it, not necessarily perfect, but just so it be safe to habitat, I mean, for somebody to occupy, or?
As Mr. Thomas indicated, the building inspector has not gone through the property with Mr. Thomas recently, so we can't assess, for example, does it need all-new electrical, does it need all-new plumbing? What, you know, simply electrical, plumbing, heat and air, foundation work, you know, can easily, roof work can easily get into tens of thousands of dollars pretty quickly.
Okay. And, sir, do you have the funds to make those kinds of repairs so that this property could be rented?
It depends what they say. Now, it's got two foundations under it. One, it does, the house looked like it was picked up by a tornado and just went like this and like that at one time. But they had one underneath it, and redid the foundation underneath it. And there is a couple of spots that have some damage that needs to be repaired. But I'm thinking it's only going to cost about $3,000, $4,000 to do that repair itself. But the roof is new. I mean, it's, it can be fixed up without spending, you know, I understand, I don't know everybody's job and what they go through, whatever. I just know what it takes to fix something, you know, that's all I know.
Any other questions, Adam? Okay, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Coming forward. We've heard a recommendation from Mr. Erickson. Seen pictures, we've read most of this. The chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
But, ma'am, I'd move that we go by the planning department's recommendation and have the structure raised.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Agnew. Okay.
Like to make one comment, but I can tell you from doing this, and we've done it a bunch of times, and you're talking about more money than what you really, you're talking about $50,000, $60,000 just in structural repairs and stuff like that on that thing, so. And it's, the house has not worked, and when you got there, you still have a $20,000 or $25,000 house, so I'm sorry, but that's just the way it is.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Motion carries. Okay, item number seven. Consider resolution of support indicating favorable consideration for a tax credit award to Zimmerman Properties, LLC to construct a new 48-unit senior multifamily housing development known as Shawnee Estates approximately one-fourth mile east of North Harrison on Transportation Parkway. Justin, would you like to share?
Thank you, commissioners and mayor. Excuse me. My comments will actually be, cover both the gen items seven and eight, and the information in your packet is combined as well. And so, gen item number seven is a 48-unit senior complex, and gen item number eight is a 60-unit family, multifamily complex. Included in your packet was a brief memorandum highlighting the proposed project, which I just described. For history's sake, did want to note that approximately a year ago, on December 16th, 2013, a request was made by Zimmerman Properties for an 84-unit multifamily development on the same property, and that resolution was approved. And so, what they've done this, this cycle, that application cycle was not funded, and so this is a separate application cycle with, through the state. And instead of 84 units, they're proposing 60, and then in addition to those 60, the 48-unit senior complex. As we've discussed previously with other requests, these resolutions are required by the state housing finance agency to go through the Affordable Housing Tax Credit Program. The information provided by Zimmerman Properties indicates that the family units will include 30 two-bedroom, two-bath units and 30 three-bedroom, two-bath units. Rent will range from 500 to approximately 585 for the two-bedroom units, and 583 to approximately 675 for the three-bedroom units. And then the composition for the senior housing is 24 one-bedroom, one-bath units and 24 two-bedroom, two-bath units, with a monthly rent of approximately 500 to 585. The amenities included in your packet were a detailed set of information provided by Zimmerman, that included site plans and examples of other developments that they've done. Some of the amenities proposed on these sites include a clubhouse, storm shelter, fitness center, computer center, picnic area, and playgrounds, et cetera. As we talked about with the last resolution request, we were waiting for some information regarding market data and need, and we do now have some more information that Mr. Ben Mitchell can provide you from Zimmerman Properties, who's here this evening. It did not come in in time to make your packets, and I do apologize for that, but that is now available. The information provided on that market study considers this proposal, but also considers every other application for 2014, and notes that it would require a capture rate of, I think about 5% of eligible households. And again, Mr. Mitchell can go into greater detail on this, but based on their review, it indicates that the current population of qualifying households in the City of Shawnee is sufficient to accommodate the proposed developments. And with the proposal by Zimmerman Properties specifically, they estimate that it would take about seven or eight months to absorb all of those units into the rental market in Shawnee. And so... And so they opened it, day one, with sixty units, so it'll take about, uh, seven or eight months for, for all of those to get, uh, to get leased and, and absorbed into the, uh, system. So I have reviewed the market study, which is about a hundred pages in length, and it, it does appear to be comprehensive. And I, um, I do think it is, um, I do think it recognizes that there is verifiable, uh, market demand. And so for that reason, staff does not have an objection to the approval of the resolutions. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
This is about the, what, fourth application only about this year?
Yes, sir.
When originally, they were, one of the selling points was to have people in there that could work at the mall. I do, it seemed like I remember hearing that. Do you remember hearing that?
Yes.
I was trying to remember if I heard that correctly. And now then, uh, they applied for a loan, is that what you're telling us?
Their application was turned down by the Housing Authority of Oklahoma, now what's it called, Oklahoma?
The Housing Finance Authority, mhm.
Now, did we hear like a week ago that like one out of four did, I mean, at our last meeting, one out of four of those get approved or something?
I, I, what, what we said last meeting was that it would be, it would be, uh, difficult to, to, to imagine that more than one application would, would get approved per jurisdiction, per cycle. Is it a possibility? It is, but they have enough interest and enough applications that it's, it's, it's unlikely.
Okay, so this unit has nothing to do with, uh, that application's of one cycle?
They're all in competition.
They're all in competition.
This one's gonna be in competition?
They're gonna be in competition with, with every other application, and they're gonna have a point system that the state goes on and, and reviews.
So they were denied on the other one, but they reapplying this way?
Yes, sir.
With this one?
Yes, sir.
So educate me, I guess, on the tax credit award that we're looking at. What would it mean to us here at the city if we gave it, what would it mean to us if we did not?
Okay. What, absent a resolution, uh, it will, that would...
Probably not get funded, for sure.
Would not get funded. It would be highly unlikely for it to get funded without a resolution of support, uh, from the city. I don't actually even know if they would accept the application. If it, if the resolution's granted, um, I think you're also asking, what is the impact if it's granted at the state level? The tax abatement is not an abatement on, um, on property tax or sales tax or anything that affects the city or the county. It is simply a, um, uh, it, it's, it's, it's a tax credit that they are able to, to capitalize on and sell on, on the open market, um, and helps them fund their development. In exchange for that, then they agree to make the units affordable, uh, to people at a certain income level, to individuals and families at a certain income level. Yes, sir.
Regarding the income level, if you're above the income level, then you wouldn't be able to rent the apartment?
You would not be able to rent it. I think there's some, there's some allocation, there's, there's some flexibility for if you, you know...
Twenty percent or something like that, they...
Right, if you, if you start out at, at a level and you get a promotion at work, I don't think that you immediately get, get kicked out of your unit. I think there's some time there.
But it's, but, but a hundred percent of the apartments are restricted on leveled income?
On, on this particular development, yes, one hundred percent. Sometimes you might have a half of the units, you know, be income restricted and half be market rate. In this particular proposal, everything is, is, um, is tax credit, uh, eligible.
Some of them they do eighty percent, eighty, twenty, some they do ninety, some it's a hundred percent. I don't know. I've been to the hearings up there, so I don't know how they determine which is what, somebody else might, but I don't know.
There's some of us on the commission that are greatly concerned about building lower-income housing. And I thought I heard you say that you looked at their hundred-page study or something, and thought that there was data to support it. You know, the last, um, Mr. Little, I, I don't remember if it was him or somebody, said they were gonna get some of that data. I would, yeah, I would encourage you for a planning meeting, if you can, don't give us the hundred page, but if you could give us some highlights in there of what you feel like, because, you know, we hear from the people in town, businesses and things, saying, you know, uh, low-income housing is, is not helping us a lot. And so we listen to them, but yet, again, uh, that's just some of the things, so.
Too, too, too much low-income?
Too much low-income.
Too much.
Entices more people to move in with lower-income housing. So, again, I, I think you could, for the commission's information, I looked at an application down for these new ones that are over here across from our, uh, city facility on Kickapoo, South Kickapoo down there, those new units, James, down there by you. And the income is based on, like, if you have four children or something?
That's the way most of them are.
Yeah, you can make up to, I wanna say fifty or fifty-five or something like that, you know what I'm saying? And I could be wrong on that, but the rent is tied to your income, too.
But the, the marketing analysis that, that, what you saw, Justin, it says that we could, we still are not saturated yet in Shawnee with low-income housing, is, are we, are we taking away from other low-income housing? Or are we getting net new people moving in?
Yeah, yeah, no, that, that's a very good point. It, it doesn't dive down to that level of, I, I think that's, that's the heart of what you're asking is, is does it, you know, does it, would it encourage, entice someone to come here from somewhere else? And, and I, um, anecdotally, I don't think that's true, but I don't, I don't have the, you know, data-wise, I don't think we have those, those data points yet. I think what's also hard to analyze in the mix is you've got, you know, brand-new units coming online, and then you've got maybe some units that are, that are, um, that are less desirable. And so does it, is it, is it, is it simply someone moving from, 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 you know, improving their housing situation and, and getting out of some of these properties that maybe, uh, need to be improved or, or removed, or, um, I didn't include in an example here, for an example, the income and rent limits for the proposed projects, they were attached in your packet, but to give you an example, the income limits for a family of four is thirty-one thousand five hundred, which is the equivalent to an hourly wage of fifteen dollars and fourteen cents over a standard worker. Um, the income limit for a household of two is twenty-five, twenty-five thousand one hundred. What the market study looks at is, is where are the income levels in the city? And, and, and then based on those income levels, what percentage of those people are renters? And then what's available in the, in the rental stock and, and, at that price point? And it's, and, and then it makes a, an informed guess on, on an absorption rate for those units and, and, and the demand there, um, for those units.
Justin, do you, and it's a fifteen-year, uh, it's a fifteen-year deal, right, for the tax incentive?
That's correct.
So after fifteen years, then there's no, so the restrictions on limit, on income can, can come off because there's no advantages, in fact, there's a disadvantage, probably.
It's longer than that.
It's fifteen years, isn't it?
I think there's several different programs. One popular one is fifteen years. Uh, I think there's, there are ways to, um, to do something slightly different, and I'll let Mr., Mr. Mitchell, um, testify.
What I was gonna ask, or do we have, do we have any places in Shawnee that those, that's been here long enough for those to come off the, the tax incentive program? That you know about, or not, that you know about?
We had, we had, we had one that just, just hit fifteen years, and then they, um...
Remodeled it.
They remodeled it, and they used it, but they used it, it doesn't require a, it's not a competitive application, but they're able to, they voluntarily say, they voluntarily, um, um, agree to continue to keep the rents affordable, and then they're...
Is that the one out on Acme?
Mhm.
So they, that we, okay.
They didn't have to come before us?
Yeah, they did. They came before us and asked for it, something, and had to remodel it. I think it was in bankruptcy or something.
It wasn't, it was. And, and I think what, what, um, what Mr. Little spoke about at the last meeting was that their application is single-family detached units, and so with those units, that might be more common, where after fifteen years, you'd then be able to, to sell the units or dispose of them differently. For multifamily property, probably be more, more common to keep it, uh, in an affordable program.
It's a longer time than that, I know.
Okay, we, thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
We do have someone here from that, that involved with that property, please come forward, sir. If you don't mind, state your name and, uh, speak into that microphone for us, old folks that are hard of hearing, yes, sir. I didn't say you all, I said us. Thank you.
Uh, yes, good evening. My name is Ben Mitchell, and I am with Zimmerman Properties. Just real quick, it is longer than fifteen years, it's forty years. That we, we thought, we commit to keep it under the program for forty years. The credits themselves expire after ten years. It's a ten-year per, uh, credit stream, so just to clarify that. The single-family, there's an option, if you do single-family, you can choose fifteen years. Because then, and, and as long as you sell it to one of the qualified residents. So that's the difference between the two.
You're talking about the ten years, the ten years is that you have to show the occupancy rate and everything like that to get the hundred percent of tax credit.
That's correct, that's correct. But then we, as an applicant, and again, it's a very competitive process, like Mr. Erickson said, we, we commit to go to forty years, and it's a, it's a scoring item. So we, we elect to do that for, for points.
Well, that's why you redone your application and put other things in there, is to get better, higher points?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That is, yes. And we also chose, um, last year, which I know a couple of you were here last year when I was here speaking to you, uh, we were looking at the site, uh, we were just developing eighty-four units for the entire site, leaving a lot of green space. Uh, we're still leaving some green space, but we thought it would be better use of the property to add a senior component. Uh, it's the same structure, or, I mean, it's the same program, it's just two separate applications. One could get funded and the other one may not, you know, it, they're competing against each other. I've got two apps that are gonna be fighting against each other. But the reason we looked at going for adding a senior component was just, it's a different population, it's a different market. It would be a hundred percent senior, and senior in the, in the state of Oklahoma is sixty-two and older.
So if, if you get one of them, is, you're awarded one of them, you won't build the other one?
That's, I would like to go back and try again with the other one, but yes.
You wouldn't?
I would, we would still move forward, we would buy...
Still move forward to one?
Absolutely, yes, correct.
Just two application per year, two, uh, two, uh, project dates or whatever you're gonna call it?
There are two application cycles, yes, sir, yes. Uh, the one right now is due, um, actually this Thursday, January eighth, and then the other cycle is due July second or third. And the funding would be for this cycle here that, that I'm, before you on, uh, would fund in May of this year, and we'd most likely start construction around October, September of October is when we'd start construction.
Mr. Mitchell, would, I had noticed that in, uh, part of the information that you had provided, that you, it says that you would allow local vendors and subcontractors to provide bids, so... Is this an indication that you would employ locally?
Oh, absolutely. We, we, um, just a little bit, I know you have information in your packet, but we have approximately twenty-four developments in the state of Oklahoma. We have over ninety in eight states, as far as our portfolio of, of stuff. What we do on the constru, and we're our own general contractor, um, what we do is we post in the local newspaper, surrounding newspapers, like, you know, we post in Oklahoma City's newspaper, but we'd also post here locally, and, um, to seek for all vendors. The only, the only subcontractor that we, we wouldn't, um, bid out is the framing company. We have our own framing crew, and that's just to get economies of scale to, you know, it's one of the more expensive components of the construction. And we have, um, built our construction company up to where we can do our own framing. But otherwise, everything else, most of the time, the dirtwork's done by a local, um, contractor, just 'cause they, they, they can be competitive, 'cause they know what they're dealing with. And so, but we will post, yes, absolutely.
Do you have other properties in the city of Shawnee that you're currently...
No. Uh, I think, I would say probably the closest, we have properties in Sand Springs, Glenpool. We have a couple in Mustang. Actually, in Mustang is exactly what I'm proposing here. We have a family component and a senior component.
Well, one, Glenpool is set off at, what, about Highway?
Yes. Well, actually, that's our second one. We have another one that's kind of east of the city.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but that one's, that one was finished in two thousand and ten, the one you're referring to. And if you've seen that property, that's exactly what we'd be building here. It's a mirror image.
Do you already own this land?
No, ma'am, no. Yeah, we have, we have it under contract, so we have site control, yes.
Is the marketing analysis that you've looked at shows it can support both these projects?
Actually, we have two separate market studies. One was, was designed just for the family deal, and then the other one was just for the senior. 'Cause again, it's a different population.
Right, right.
But, and I, based, you know, and I know Mr. Erickson mentioned it. What it, what the market study does is it determines how many qualified renters are existing in the community. Not, he was correct when he said it, it doesn't analyze what's the pull from outside. It looks at what's here already. And that was on a family, on the family side, there, and this is also two-person household to five-person household. That's the, that's all they look at, yeah. And there's approximately twenty-two hundred people, households in the community already that are qualified income-wise and are currently renters, based on their data. And again, they're using statistical data.
Does that include the low-income housing that we have right now?
This is talking about renters.
That's the total population already?
The population.
Oh, okay.
So those, those twenty-two hundred would already be, that's two, twenty-two hundred family units?
Families, correct, yes.
Yeah, that, that's twenty-two hundred that's already renting someplace.
Right, and this is taken from the census data, you know? Um, but that's, that's how many are already here existing.
Is that within city limits of Shawnee, or is that county? What is the, what is the...
I, I would have, I don't have the full, like you said, it was over a hundred pages. I believe it's just the city. Because if you got it, the county, that'd be too big of a, of a, um, statistical area. There is data, though, that includes the county, but for this analysis, it's just for the city. And then also, then, for the senior, the market study was done just considering the senior deal, and with the same qualifications, I said about the qualified renters, the senior one also takes into account age. And there's approximately sixteen hundred qualified.
When does that start, at what age, fifty-five?
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two?
Yes. You have, every resident on the senior side has to be sixty-two. So you can't have a spouse that's, you know, sixty, and then...
Both of them have to be sixty-two.
Both of them, correct, yes. There, that is, there's two, I don't wanna get into too much. There's two federal definitions for seniors. There's a sixty-two, and then there's a fifty-five. OFA, the state agency, has elected to use the sixty-two definition for senior.
We have a very high, when I was looking at the census, that you go in, bring up on the internet from fifty-five and above, we have a huge percentage of people in Shawnee that are...
And that's one of the reasons.
But I didn't know a sixty.
Yeah.
Is the way, Justin, is the way this is, are we voting on, I mean, we, we, both at the same time, or...
Oh, we'll have to type each one separately, but, but he's already kinda given us a summary of all that.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Sorry, you already covered that.
Any other questions?
I'll just have one.
Okay, we got one in you.
On the senior multifamily, is that income restricted also?
Yes, yeah, they're, they're identical, um, structures. As far as the building, the senior one is a single building, three stories, interior hallways, so for security. So you have to go through a security door to get into the, uh, the residential, it's like a wing. And then the center, three stories, is all commercial, or, or common space, not commercial, common. So there would be, um, there's approximately, I wanna say over five thousand square feet of community space for the residents, to include, there's one area where it's got full kitchens, you know, so they can have potlucks and stuff like that. It does also have a fitness center in it, surprisingly. The fitness center in the senior developments actually get used more than the family deals, so.
Now, Commissioner Shaw, you have a question?
Um, it sort of, since you had already covered it, Commissioner, gee, I have another one, and this is actually for Mr. Erickson, so thank you, Mr. Mitchell, I appreciate it. Is this on our comprehensive plan?
The comprehensive plan speaks, uh, generally to the provision of affordable housing. It does not get down to the level of saying, we need, you know, two thousand more, X number of units. So I would say it's, I would say it's not contradictory to the plan. But I would just remind the commission that the plan is general in nature.
It's in North Rock Creek School District, I guess, north of the interstate?
That sounds correct, yes, it is, it is north of the interstate.
They, 'cause the good part of it is that it'll provide housing for, what is like the, you know, seven, eight, nine, ten-dollar-an-hour people, and that's the good part of it is. The bad part of it is, that's, you know, if you add in eighty-four units, or whatever it is, then that goes against when you, city of Shawnee and that's reading Shawnee qualifies because of our income level at, at what it is today. And that's the reason why the county does, because the income level is slow. So that's the reason that, uh, all these projects are coming to us is because of, of the income level in Shawnee, so.
I think we have, what, twenty-seven percent, I think, when I looked at that number?
But...
The poverty level or below.
What those surveys don't show, I think thirty-seven percent of the houses, rooftops in Shawnee are rental property today.
Really? Thirty percent? Okay, sir, any more questions, have you?
No, I, I do also, just in case, 'cause I know you've had a couple of other deals, uh, come before you earlier, and, and you kinda hit it right there, I do, just wanted to point out that there's also a minimum income requirement. You know, Mr. Erickson talked about the maximum, but you have to earn a minimum amount as well.
If you can't pay the rent, when, since, or are they not gonna let you rent the apartment?
It's, it's, yeah, in general, it's thirty percent of, of, the rent can't exceed thirty percent of your income.
Right.
But that is also a qualification. I just wanted to point out the fact that it's, 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 there's... If somebody just came in with a voucher and they had no income, they wouldn't qualify. Now, if they came in with a voucher, but they still, they didn't income qualified, we would accept them.
That's a pretty good point.
And vouchers are by the Housing Authority.
I wanna thank you for... I want to thank you for educating us a little bit.
Well, I'm happy to.
That was informative, I learned a lot, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
And we do have a recommendation from the staff in this matter that we consider approving this, but again, it's up to you, Commissioner, so the chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
All I'd comment I'd make is that the business people and people like that are trying to help Shawnee by raising the income level and trying to get the income level up, and projects like this will not help that at all.
Well, I certainly think that when you have a housing need, I would hope that we would start including these kind of housing needs into our comprehensive plan and make some type of effort to start having some guidance and direction on that. So I appreciate that Mr. Mitchell and his company is trying to afford us additional housing.
You know, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion, and I want to make a comment also, I'm gonna make a motion and go ahead and approve, but the comment is that I do think that this is one of the items that I'd like to discuss in our planning session and come out with some guidelines, and, in order to be fair to everyone on, and, you know, I, personally, I don't like the hundred percent, you know, I think it ought to be, you know, eighty, twenty, or sixty, forty, or something, you know, but, you know, I understand.
You don't set those on your application, those are set by the state, aren't they?
No.
Two is dead on your application.
But, but that's some, to be fair, we've, in this past year, we've approved several of these, we see in several of these each year, it seems like, so we just, I'd like to at least talk about it in a, in a bigger, you know, planning session-type forum to really understand what kind of guidelines we might want to look at going forward, if we're gonna continue to get these applications.
One thing is, Mayor, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but can't we make a decision so that the mayor, give the mayor the authority to sign off on these within certain conditions, and it doesn't have to come before the commission, can we do that?
Yes, um, yes. What you're, what you're doing is approving, you're basically gonna alter, I mean, I'd rather you bring it back and, and have-
Yeah, let's bring it back.
Oh, I'm not doing that tonight.
... the resolution, yeah.
I'm not talking about that tonight, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I don't know that we'd want to do that, I don't know that I'd do that.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor, do we have a-
Excuse me, and is this for the forty-eight unit senior, I believe that's the first one?
Right, forty-eight unit senior, do we have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll have a second, I mean, I'll have a second.
Commissioner, by Ajay, second, okay? So would you read it to us, please, ma'am?
This is a resolution supporting the construction of a new forty-eight unit senior multifamily housing development known as Shawnee Estates Development by Zimmerman Properties LLC, located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and supporting favorable consideration be given for tax credit award for this development.
Okay, then it's time to vote. Motion carries. Item number eight is, we've really heard the same, the story about it, because it included all of them, but I'll read it, consider resolution of support for indicating favorable consideration for a tax credit award to Zimmerman Properties LLC to construct a new sixty-unit family multifamily housing development known as Shawnee Park Apartments, approximately one-fourth mile east of North Harrison on Transportation Parkway. The chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
Motion to approve.
Okay, Commissioner Ajay made the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shaw, would you read it, please, ma'am?
This is a resolution supporting the construction of a new sixty-unit family multifamily housing development known as Shawnee Park Apartments Development by Zimmerman Properties LLC, located within the corporate limits of the city of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and supporting favorable consideration be given for tax credit award for this development.
Okay, let's vote, ladies and gentlemen. Motion carries. Okay, item number nine is consider bids and proposals, proposals for snow and ice removal. I thought we told you not to talk about this last time, we don't want any of that ice or snow.
We're gonna try to keep it all away, but the weatherman keeps bringing it back in the forecast, so I don't know how that'll work. Don Lynch, emergency management director, at your last meeting, we opened proposals from two vendors for snow and ice removal assistance, but we looked at both of those proposal packages and found them to be in order, have a staff memo beginning at page seventy-four of your agenda packets, we've recapped the proposals that were received, I visited with the street superintendent about this, we have added equipment and plans to borrow operators for that equipment to our fleet this year, which has helped, but if we were to receive a big event where we might not be able to handle it all with the equipment that we have, we still like to have the ability to go out and get some assistance from a couple of those vendors. Talked with the, the street superintendent about both of those vendors, and both of those firms were acceptable to him, and so while we have one vendor that has equipment that might be available, if it was not dedicated somewhere else to an already pre-existing contract, then we have one vendor that, that can meet part of the list of equipment that we had asked for, so therefore, we'd like to make a recommendation, we are making a recommendation this evening, to get contracts to both of those firms, and we would use the appropriate one at the time, depending upon what equipment was available, and we check with them for that, at that point. And again, if we needed these firms to come in, it would be under the emergency speeding authority of the city manager to handle that, which is up to twenty-five thousand dollars, and we'd be getting with the finance director to look at where those funds would be programmed in the budget, of course, once that declaration is made, it does come back to the city commission for ratification at their next meeting. Also, this will help us if we get an ice storm that's significant enough that would warrant a federal declaration, having this pre-event contract does help us speed the declaration process and give us an advantage to the amount of money that's received back in a cost-sharing agreement for that. So the staff's recommendation would be to award contracts to both of the vendors. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
We only pay if we use them, right?
Only pay if we use them.
Tom, I-
Have a motion by Vice Mayor?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Hall. Let's vote. Carry it. I did? Oh, sorry. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Item number B is proposal for city manager executive search firms.
Good evening, Mayor, commissioners. I submitted proposals, or submitted our RFP to six different executive search firms, one declined to quote, and the other three, or the other six, five are listed. The Pace Group submitted a proposal for thirty-five thousand plus expenses, Strategic Government Resources submitted a proposal for twenty-seven thousand plus expenses, Colin Bay Senior and Associates submitted a proposal for twenty-three thousand all-inclusive, the Mercer Group submitted a proposal for sixteen thousand five hundred plus expenses, and Atheon Public Executive Search submitted a proposal for twenty-five thousand all-inclusive.
Did they also submit resumes and so forth?
Yes, they're all in the proposals. I recommend that I refer this to the commission and the committee for review.
Well, then we just, it's a lot of copies, I-
I have, I have seven of each.
Are they electronic, or are they?
No, I could, I could ask-
No, I was just asking.
I could request them if they could send me one.
Just thought that'd be easier, only since we'll have the committee members, and we have seven of us.
Right.
If you have seven of each, you could give those to us, but I think that committee at least four of those, five would need-
We need to table this and assign it to the committee, Marion.
Refer it.
Yeah, we refer, let's refer to the committee with the input of the commission, so if we could get copies to all the commissioners-
So moved.
Of that, okay?
Okay.
If that's okay, and then we'll get the committee meeting, okay? We have a motion and a second on the floor to do that, any, any more further discussion?
So, could you read me what that motion says, that's what I was gonna ask, where it's stated?
That we defer and to forward the information to the commissioners and the committee for further action.
We've gotta read them, we've gotta figure out what they are.
Well, we'll contact some of their references, to see people they've worked for us, if they're satisfied and so forth, this normal price doesn't mean anything to me, you got no other, how they performed in the past.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Who's second?
I did.
He did. Okay, then let's vote. Motion carries. Item number C is the Shawnee Pool Parking Project, new pool over here and park for COS PW dash fourteen dash oh-one, you're gonna open those today?
Michael, what was the budget for this, do you remember? Send it to me.
I'm not sure off the top of my head, because I think originally, we were gonna see how much it costs, I mean, the pool came in at four point two million dollars, and parking lot really hasn't been-
Okay.
I thought we were hoping that the pool contractor would come in with a good bid, since he was already here, is that right, Mr. Bryce?
We're open.
I'm afraid he didn't.
No, it isn't.
This is the bid opening for the Shawnee Pool Parking Project, we have three bids. The first bid was from CGC in an amount of three hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-five cents. The second bid opened was from Bronco Enterprises in the amount of four hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars even, and third bidder was JLT Contracting LLC in the amount of four hundred and twenty-five thousand, forty-five dollars and ten cents. Staff would recommend deferring this to the next meeting.
Tom, move.
Have a motion to defer this item till the next meeting, do I have a second?
Second.
Second?
I have, on the defer, Ted, I'd like to, about the, about the information and so forth.
Okay, let's vote. Motion carries. Mr. Mayor, any new business?
Mayor, there is no new business this evening.
Well, I will recess then, this part of the meeting, and reconvene the Shawnee Airport Authority. I will call it to order and declare that we do have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
Tom, move.
Motion by Vice Mayor Harry, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall, let's vote on that matter. Motion carries, item number, I'll adj, uh, next item is new business, you got any new business, Mr. Erickson?
Yes, sir, no new business.
Okay, then I will adjourn the Shawnee Airport Authority, and I will call to order the Shawnee Municipal Authority. I will declare we do have a quorum, consider, item number one is consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Hall, second by Vice Mayor Harry, let's vote. Motion carries, okay, I will adjourn this meeting and reconvene to a commission meeting. And it's item number eleven, is consider an executive session, discuss potential claims, litigation, or other options regarding case number CB two oh one four dash six, Potawatomi County, City of Shawnee versus International Union of Police Associations, Local Number Three, and John Arnett is authorized by twenty-five OS. Chair will entertain a motion to go in an executive session in this matter.
Tom, move.
Vice Mayor Harry, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Motion carries. Okay, we'll adjourn. Item number twelve, consider matters discussed in executive session regarding potential claims, litigation, or any other options regarding case number CB two oh one four dash six, Potawatomi County of Shawnee versus International Union of Police Association, Local Number Three, and John Arnett is authorized by twenty-five OS three oh seven. Is there a motion in this matter?
I'd maybe authorize legal counsel to file an appeal from the order of the district court of Potawatomi County in the matter of City of Shawnee versus IOPA, Local Number Three, and John Arnett.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Harry, and a second by Commissioner Hall. Let's vote. Motion carries. Okay, anything else that anybody wants to talk about, or anything? Okay, then I'll adjourn our meeting.